Are we ready? Because I finally am. Okay, welcome to our Murray City Planning Commission meeting. It is December 7th, 2023. It's 6:33 PM. I'm just going to introduce everybody up here on the stand. Starting to my left is Travis Nay. Then we have Ned Hacker and then Marion Patterson. I'm Jake Pearson. We have Jeremy Lowry, Vice Chair Lisa Malkovich, and Michael Henry. And with staff, we have Zachary Smallwood, Susan Nixon, and Mustafa Al Janabi. This meeting is being recorded and livestreamed on murraycitylive.com and facebook.com/murraycityutah. There will be a public comment section during the meeting. During this time, the public is welcome to come up to the podium and make a public comment. And when you do, please state your name and address and limit your comments to three minutes. And if you could speak into the microphone so we can hear you here and also those watching at home can also hear you, that would be great. For those watching remotely, you can submit comments during the public comment period by emailing planningcommission@murray.utah.gov. And just so you know, if you are watching remotely, this is the only way we will get your comments. So if you post something on the bottom of a video on Facebook, we will not see it. Please feel free, for those that are here, after your agenda item has been finished, you are free to leave if you would like or free to stay and listen to the rest of what we're doing. We're going to follow the agenda as it's written. The first thing is an approval of minutes, which is from October 19th, 2023. We did make a few minor corrections in our pre-meeting. But does anybody have any other discussion on this or we can entertain a motion?
Mr. Chair, I'd like to move that we accept the minutes for the October 19th, 2023 meeting, as are with the minor grammatical corrections.
Thank you. We have a motion from Vice Chair Malkovich. Do we have a second?
A second.
That's a second from Commissioner Lowry. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Perfect. Does anybody have a conflict of interest for tonight's agenda items?
No.
I don't either. Number three, we have two findings of facts, but we are not... We did find some concerns with the Cottonwood Security finding a fact, so we are going to not do an approval for that one tonight, and they're going to go back and rewrite those. But we can entertain a motion on the skincare finding a fact.
Mr. Chairman, I make motion that the Planning Commission approve the findings of fact and conclusions for the conditional use permit for skincare ink.
Thank you. We have a motion from Commissioner Hacker. Is there a second?
I'll second the motion.
That was a second from Vice Chair Malkovich?
Yes.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Perfect. Okay, we're going to move right along to our agenda item number four, which is Take Five Murray. And this is going to be presented by Susan Nixon. Susan?
Thank you. This application is for Take Five Drive-Thru Quick-Lube Business on the corner of Murray Boulevard and 5300 South. The address is 696 West 5300 South. This is the former Conoco gas station site. And gas stations and lube oils are conditional use in the CN zone. And... The property just to the east of it is just was recently zoned, well, in the last year or so, to residential RM15. And north of it is the CN, and then to the west is also RM15, and south is a commercial area, Smithson, et cetera, retail area. And then the site is a .72 acre site, and they are proposing to build 1,847 square foot quick-lube business. And here's some photos of just the frontage along 53rd and also Murray Boulevard. And photos of the existing structure, the remainder of the Conoco station. The applicant's proposed a site plan, which was revised as of last week after the packets went out to the Planning Commissioners. So the site plan we're looking at is the updated one and the one that, if the Planning Commission approves this, that we will go from. They did not have time to revise the landscape plans and the civil plans to match this. So it's up to the Commission if you want to continue with this as the proposal, with the proposed plans we have. But they will be required to match the civil plans and the landscape plans that will match this site plan that's before us. The reason for the revised site plan is, you can see in the upper left-hand corner of the property, there's two red boxes. Those are Murray City Power Facility Equipment. And the Power Department commented that they thought it would be very difficult to relocate those. And so because of that, the applicant shifted the driveway off of Murray Boulevard about 15 to 17 feet further south, so they would not infringe on those power equipment. The proposal is for the drive-through quick-lube, and it is for the customers are to remain in the vehicle, so there's no waiting area within the building itself. The building is comprised of a office area, shop area, of course, the drive-through lanes, and then a restroom. This is the landscape plan that does not match the existing updated site plan, but gives you an idea as far as what they're proposing. They will, of course, need to meet the landscape requirements of the 10-foot buffer along both the, both frontages, Murray Boulevard and 53rd. And then also, because it is adjacent to the residential to the east, they are required to have a 10-foot landscape buffer along the east boundary, in addition to a solid masonry wall. Again, that's because they're adjacent to residential. They are proposed to have the hours of operation on Monday through Friday, 7 to 7; Saturdays, 7 to 6; and Sundays, 10 to 5, I believe. And the number of employees will range anywhere from two to eight at any given time. And then here's a floor plan of the proposal that just shows you the small office area, shop area, the base, and then there will also be a upper mezzanine area of about 337 square feet. The total of, based on the square footage and the uses, calculates that a minimum of 12 parking spaces required, and they have 12 spaces proposed on the site plan. I'm going to go back to the site plan here. In the CN zone, the front setback is minimum of 20 feet, and also on corner side yard is 20 feet. And then to, when it's adjacent to residential, it's 15 feet for a structure. Their proposal far exceeds the setbacks, at least from the frontage along 53rd. And then the frontage along 700 West of Murray Boulevard is 20 feet 4 inches. And then it is quite a distance from the north and then also from the east. They far exceed the setbacks. So setbacks are not an issue. The proposed height for the building is, at the highest point, is 21 feet 7 inches. The maximum that are allowed in the CN zone is 35, so height is not an issue. And so, based on the application and the updated site plan, the findings for the approval are as outlined there. There's four findings. And then staff is recommending that there be approval for the quick and lube oil business, subject to the conditions outlined there, with the addition, modification to condition number five. And I'll just read that, to meet the requirements of the water and wastewater divisions. And then what was added after the packets went out was care must be taken for this property to preserve the water source protection zone 4, 400-600 West well, and the cities shall be notified if any spills of any nature take place. And then, of course, there'd be one, the condition, I believe it's number... Let's see, the one to update the site plan to match. Number eight, yeah, number eight. The updated plans must, last sentence, number eight, the updated plans must be the required minimum... Oh, excuse me. Updated setback. Oh, number 10, I'm sorry. Submit updated civil and landscape plans to match the site planned dated 11/30/23. Sorry. And that is basically it. Did I miss anything or do you have any questions?
Thank you. Does anybody have any questions for Susan? I just have one question. The, are the gas tanks still on site? They've already been taken out? Okay.
I believe they've already been taken out.
Okay.
Yeah, it's not in yet, so...
Perfect.
I have a question.
So along with that, oh, I'm sorry. Along with that, there's no remediation required?
If there is, they will have to do it, but I'm not aware of any. I think that the gas tanks are taken out, it should be clean, but I'm sure they'll have to do a, they'll have to do a geotech.
Give us one second, I'll have you come up in just a second, okay?
Usually for any lender, they will require some kind of an environmental test, study done.
And that's for the gas tanks, and how about for the business? I mean, I've changed my own, I know a little bit about small volumes of oil, but when you're collecting large volumes of oil, is there somebody that checks that you're following whatever process?
Oh, yeah, they will have to meet the water and sewer, public services, they will have to meet grease traps, whatever's required of that. Yes, for sure. Oh, yeah, absolutely.
Okay. Is there any other questions for Susan? If not, we'll have that. Okay, please come up. If you could just state your name and address, that would be great.
My name's Mitch Vandigetch. I'm with Take Five Oil Change. So we have a few other ones.
Real quick, sorry to interrupt you real quick. Can you just push the little button so the green light comes on, so the mic?
And start over? Oh, maybe talk a little closer to the microphone.
You have to get...
There we go.
All right, my name's Mitch Vandigetch. With Take Five Oil Change. We have a few other shops, so this will be our fourth one, or fourth or fifth, depending. So, address, we're out of West Jordans, our main location, 8980 South Redwood. So to comment on the gas tanks, they are removed. There is an NFA from the state on that. As far as used oil, so how we do it is there, there's containment within all the bays to where there's no drains on the floor. So if any of our storage tanks were to leak, it would be contained in the pits, they're shallow pits. So there's nothing that could go, and that's all concrete, nothing that could go into the soil or anywhere into the landscaping for the environment. Once all the used oil is collected, it gets pumped into some additional tanks inside the building. The state does require that we use a certified company, and there's a company out of, it's called Rock Canyon. There's a few different ones, but they come weekly and pick it up. So all the used oil and filters, all that is all environmentally safe and collected.
Thank you.
And appreciate everyone's time. Susan, you did a great job preventing that.
Thank you. Does anybody else have any questions for the applicant?
I have one. So your, the architectural drawings here show you have three trenches.
Yes, sir.
But the elevation doesn't show any underground space. So I just, I just, this is a drive-in, and the employees are underground draining oil. It's not a car lift.
Correct. It's not a car lift, so it's, we call it a shallow pit. It's three feet deep, three feet wide, and nine feet long, so it's all in the foundation of the building. So it's not a basement, it's different from a typical quick-lube.
It's only three feet deep?
Yes, sir. We sit on our bottoms and...
You get an employee under there?
Yeah, so how we do it is, we'll have them, we guide them in, and then they don't cover the pit completely. And then the customer turns off the engine and puts their hood up, and then gets down in the pit, does all the oil change, and then comes out. Allows for it to be fast, so it's, we average about a 10-minute oil change.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Just look like a functional question on one of the plans. It looks like coming out of the east bay, it's a really tight radius.
Yep. You saying for the exit?
For the cars to exit.
Yeah, so, and that's where we check. The, this Take Five is a corporate, or a franchise company. There's about 1,000 of them nationwide, so we check with their construction company, and they always recommend having at least a 25-foot exit from the curb. And that curb, I believe, is 26'5" from the, directly outside of that east bay. Because you have that, there's a 20-foot dimension you can see going across, and then you have about a five-to-six-foot radius, and then that along with the additional shifting just a little to the left. But good catch, because I, that is one thing I checked, because I don't want that for the customer experience as well, so...
Well, it also looks like if you had to, you could take some of that frontage landscape area out.
Thanks.
A little bit. Well, they've got a big enough setback there, more than required. Thank you.
Additional questions? Susan, can you go back to the conditions?
Yes.
Were you able to review all these conditions, including the changes that were made, Condition Five and the addition of number 10?
Yes, sir.
And will you be able to comply with all those?
Yes, sir.
Perfect. Is there anything else you'd like to tell the Commission?
No, thank you for your time.
Thank you. You can have a seat. Okay, let's do a public comment period. So I'm going to go ahead and open up the public comment period. If you are here and would like to make a public comment, please come up to the podium, state your name and address, and please limit your comments to three minutes. Those watching remotely can make a comment by emailing planningcommission@murray.utah.gov. See nobody here? We'll give it like 30 seconds while we all sit here awkwardly waiting for an email.
I didn't mention that we did send out the notices. I think there was 33, and we did not receive any comments back.
Okay, perfect.
I have just another question about the parking.
Yeah, give us, give me one second. Okay. Zach, I assume we've got no emails? Perfect. I'm going to go ahead and close the public comment period. Go ahead.
And maybe this, this just educated me outside the meeting, I don't know, but I, in looking at what your explanation was for the parking, I couldn't reconcile that with the way I was reading the code.
Okay, I can explain that. So there's 85 feet for office, 85 square feet for office, 85 feet for restroom. We don't factor in restrooms as far as requiring any parking. And then 158 feet of oil room, and 337 for the mezzanine, which is a storied shop area. And then the balance of that is 750 shop area and the three bays. So for office, we require one stall for 250 square feet. And then any office, any shop or storage is one per 750. And then we calculate three stalls per bay, and when you add that up, it comes up with 12 required, one of which needs to be an ADA stall. And they have 12 on the site plan.
Where is that three spaces per bay requirement?
It's in our, in the parking code.
It is in the parking code.
Yeah, it's Chapter 17, .72. And we always go with the highest number. If one is lesser than the other, we go with the higher. Any other questions?
Are there any additional comments?
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion that we approve the conditional use permit to allow the drive-through quick-lube shop business at the property address 696 West 5300 South, subject to the 10 conditions with the changes as noted.
Thank you. We have a motion from Commissioner Patterson. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
We have a second from Commissioner Hacker. Let's do a roll call vote.
Okay, Ms. Patterson?
Yes.
Mr. Hacker?
Yes.
Mr. Lowry?
Yes.
Mr. Nay?
Yes.
Mr. Henry?
Yes.
Ms. Malkovich?
Yes.
And Chair Pearson?
Yes. Okay, congratulations. Look forward to seeing that corner occupied. Okay, let's move on to Agenda Item Number Five, which is Rumble Boxing Murray. This is going to be presented by Mustafa Al Janabi.
Thank you. So starting with this, the application is for Rumble Boxing located at 5642 South 900 East. As shown, that little blue rectangle is where the location is. It is relocated in the CD zone, which is a commercial. The floor plan is shown right over here, as it is. The application is straightforward. So how is it set up? Is membership sales will be on the left. There'll be a storage room, restrooms on, moving up to the right, moving up to the right again, this is studio, there's like a little stage over there. On the right again, there's like a walk-in area, and there's an office way in the back. The application hours should be, as stated by the applicant, is Tuesday, Thursdays, 5:00 AM starting, Saturday, Sunday, 8 to 1, 8:00 AM to 1:00 PM, Monday, Wednesday, Friday, at 6 to 8. Expected customers to be around 25 to 40, doing a 45-minute workout, and around 10 employees would be available in there. These are the pictures for the property. It is the one, let's see if I could, oh, I cannot, no. This is the outside of it, the parking space. It is right next to Macy's. As it is, it's a straightforward application. There are a couple of accesses in the property. I should go back, probably. There are five accesses, three of them on 300 East, and if I go back, three of them are on 900 East. And then there's like two of them on the 5600 north of it. Going back to the finding of facts, let's see, what else I'm missing? Oh, parking lot, sorry. So parking is required to be 15, as 5.7 of recommended per 1,000 square foot, per engineering, which would come it up as 15, as their, the unit is 2681 square foot. Based on the finding of facts, it is allowed in there according to land use code of 7425, conditions approved by the ordinance. And according to the recommendation, the staff does recommend to approve as per the located conditions. Any questions?
Any questions for Mustafa?
Thank you, appreciate it.
Okay, if the applicant's present, can you please come up to the podium? State your name and address if you could.
How you doing? Christopher Allison. The address is 5642 South 900 East.
Thank you for being here. Have you been able to review these four conditions and up on the board?
Now I have, yes.
Okay. And will you be able to comply with all of those?
Yes, yeah.
Perfect. Okay, do you have anything that you would like to tell the Planning Commission?
No, just thank you for your time. Thank you, Mustafa, I really appreciate it.
Okay, thank you. Does anybody have a question for the applicant? Perfect. You can go ahead and have a seat. Thank you for being here. Okay, we're going to open up a public comment period. So if you'd like to make a public comment, please come up to the podium, please state your name and address, limit your comments to three minutes. And if you're watching remotely, you can submit a comment by emailing planningcommission@murray.utah.gov. And we'll give it just one second. I see nobody here that wants to make a comment. I'm assuming we have no emails. I'm going to go ahead and close the public comment period. And we can discuss this if we need to, or I can entertain a motion.
Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion that the Planning Commission approve a conditional use permit to allow Rumble Boxing Gym at the property address 6242 South 900 East, Unit B6, subject to the following four conditions.
Thank you. We have a motion from Commissioner Nay. Is there a second?
Second.
It's a second from Commissioner Lowry. Let's do a roll call vote.
Okay, Commissioner Nay?
Yes.
Commissioner Lowry?
Yes.
Commissioner Hacker?
Yes.
Commissioner Patterson?
Yes.
Commissioner Malkovich?
Yes.
And Commissioner Henry?
Yes.
Chair Pearson?
Yes. Okay, that's approved. Congratulations. Let's move on to Agenda Item Number Six. This is going to be presented by Zachary Smallwood.
Awesome, thank you so much. This is a text amendment drafted by staff and the city attorney's office, planning staff in the city attorney's office, amending the subdivision code to comply with, it was Senate Bill 174 of, that has changed some of the lands, not landscaping, the subdivision amendments. So a little bit of history and background. So many cities up and down the Wasatch Front and throughout Utah required applications for subdivisions to have up to four public hearings. Two at the Planning Commission, one for preliminary and one for final, and then two at a city council meeting, one at preliminary and one at final. For example, Midvale City did that. They didn't approve subdivisions. We would, when I was a Planning Commissioner, we would recommend to the city council to approve them. We've actually been pretty straightforward with Murray, sorry, Murray has been pretty straightforward with our subdivision code. You guys have been designated as the land use authority for the city and has been the approver of subdivision, subdivisions in general. So we are not really the target for this bill. We've pretty, we've moved very quickly on subdivisions comparatively. So state was concerned or continues to be concerned with the delay in housing construction and approval, and their response for that is SB 174. So that requires subdivisions to be reviewed by an administrative land use body, not the city or town councils. So it mandates a certain shot clocks for submission. So once we as planning staff accept a, an application as complete, we have 15 business days to have it before you for review and approval. And then a total maximum of four reviews that are allowed to be done between the city and the applicant. Once, once those are complete, it's pretty much deemed complete. So for a preliminary subdivision, like I said, 15 business days from complete application. So some of the, one of the drawbacks of this is that this is going to speed up a lot of cities, but it's actually going to slow Murray down a bit. We've had to change our process, because not, when somebody comes in to submit an application, we don't necessarily have a Planning Commission scheduled within 15 days to allow for adequate public noticing, to do a review, prepare staff reports, and get them out to you. So we have had to implement kind of a whole new way of accepting applications. So we are now going to just accept an application, and we will have up to, so it's a little confusing because it's also 15 days, up to 15 days to review that application to determine if it's complete. Once it's determined it's complete, then we will schedule it on the next available Planning Commission. So it's actually going to slow us down a little bit, unfortunately, because we have to be very strict on what we accept and make sure everything is, all the ducks are in a row before we, we take it before you guys. So, so that's for preliminary subdivision. And I did want to make sure that I checked the state code, because we are allowed to have one public hearing for the preliminary, and that's in Section 109A 604 dot 1, subsection number seven. That's in the state code, it's not going to be in your, in your text. And I'll just read it, just to make it simple. So it says, "With respect to a preliminary application, the subdivided land and administrative land use authority may," and it says, "A, receive public comment, and B, hold no more than one public hearing," which is not very fun, but we're dictated.
But that's stating just for preliminary, so if we wanted to have four for the final, we could.
Final is no longer allowed to be reviewed at the Planning Commission. It's a staff-level approval. So you will...
Per state regulation.
Per state regulation. Yep. So it's no longer being reviewed by the board, it will be done by the city. So, so coming next to final subdivision, so again, there is a shot clock here. So once we receive an application for final subdivision, it's 20 business days from complete application for staff to review and provide a letter or approval. Again, reviewed by city staff, no public body at that point. So I did kind of draw up a little bit just to, so without going through each individual line of the text change, I'll let you guys ask questions if you have them, but for brevity's sake, I've decided to put in kind of what our process is, because that's really the important thing, is this changes a lot of process. And what, so what our current process is, and then what the new process will be. Um and what, so what our current process is and then what the new process will be. So currently, we require a concept review on most applications. Uh we, the, the CED director is allowed to waive that. Um if, if they feel that it's not warranted. Uh so that's step one. So that's an internal review. That usually gets farmed out to all the departments, much like you guys get in all your applications where it gives a list of the reviewing departments and their comments, and then we just draft that letter back to them. Um then they go back and amend that section. So that's here, step two. They amend based on those comments and then they are able to submit for a preliminary subdivision. So we do, we are required to provide a public notice for this. Um which state law says that has to be mailed within ten business days of um the meeting. So we usually send those almost two weeks ahead of schedule, just to make sure they have it. Uh and then that's kind of the sub-process underneath. So we have that review by city departments, staff report to the planning commission, a public hearing, and then the action by the planning commission. Then, um what happens then is kind of an internal process where developer addresses the items presented at the planning commission and works with our engineering team to uh prepare a final plat. That can go quite a long time sometimes. Sometimes you guys don't see it again for final for a couple of months. Um or there's some like Brad Reynolds where you see it, where he gets his ducks in a row really quick and is able to turn it around really fast. Um kinda depends. Uh that, that's actually one of the sticking points. I'll just go off here a minute. That was actually one of the sticking points that the league of cities and towns pushed back on, pushed back on was that a lot of times cities are doing the engineering for the applicant instead of them providing the engineering and we review it. We are, we have often, our engineering team does a great job at having to do this. There are certain engineering firms that submit not very good plans. And then where we go in and try to fix as much as possible and they're just like, oh, great, thanks. And then, you know, provide us new drawings. We bring, we bring them back before you guys. Um and that can take quite a bit of time, so. So once that's complete, uh we schedule it for a final subdivision approval. And that's again, reviewed by the city departments. Uh there is no notice required for final subdivision, so those are, we don't send out notices on those. But we do uh do an updated staff report to the planning commission. Uh you guys often do a public hearing for those. I don't think you've ever not done one. Um and then final action by the planning commission to approve the final subdivision. And then uh again, it goes to back and forth between city and developer just making those final, final rounds of tweaks and modifications. And then once they both agree that everything is ready, then they get the Mylar. Uh most of you have been chair or vice chair at some point and seen that piece of paper we bring in all the time, have you guys sign? Um they print that piece of paper, it's called a plat in Mylar. Um get those signatures on it and then it finally goes to Salt Lake County to be recorded and to dot, you're done. Um so that was a long-winded way of telling kind of what our current process is now. Uh the, the new process is a, uh here in yellow um is concept review. We are no longer allowed to mandate or require a concept review, um but it is, um we can suggest it. And um it actually, I, I've started doing this um for a while now. I've kind of been more, I can hold it to somebody if they really need to, but I've kind of been more suggestive instead. Uh just to see how it goes and most applicants have been pretty receptive to it. So um because they see the value in it, it does give them, it, it, it provides a lot of clarity ahead of time so that they don't have as many uh comments when they get to preliminary, so.
Zach, can I ask you a question?
Sure.
This change right here is a pretty substantial change, especially when it comes to the MCCD. Can you talk a little bit about what that impact would be to the MCCD committee and, and how that would be reflected in the moving forward?
Well, so these are just, this is only for a subdivision project. So this is only if you're taking multiple pieces of land and creating new lots out of them. Um it doesn't really affect like design reviews or conditional use permits or things like that.
But if I were to do a condominium, I would be doing a subdivision in the MCCD.
Correct.
So I would be impacted.
You would be impacted at that point, yes. So a concept review would not be required. So they could just move forward to a preliminary, preliminary subdivision for sure. So they um, I don't think, we don't take, it, it's complex. We take design reviews to the MCCD review committee. So they review the building, right? Um the aesthetics and the site, make sure it's gonna fit in with the MCCD. Uh they're not necessarily looking at the same type of level of detail that the planning commission is looking at with regards to, you know, utilities. Um and property lines, things like that, making sure those things are addressed. The MCCD is looking more at that uh at aesthetics.
But if there is not a concept review required, hopefully people are interested, but not required, then we're gonna be leaning on our knowledge base to catch those details because this will be the first look, where in the past, the planning staff has caught those details and cleaned those things up prior to bringing it to the planning commission.
Hmm so th- that's where we're gonna be, your staff reports might be a little more hefty. Um because that will get reviewed by the city department still, but they will probably have more more comments that haven't been addressed ahead of time. Um so yeah, they might be a little more hefty and a little bit more um.
Less clean.
Yeah, exactly.
Zach, is this process um modified the same way for a city council?
City council?
Get one uh public comment?
No, because city councils never reviewed subdivisions. And they will not be allowed to review subdivisions.
So won't ever go to the city council?
No, and it never has, um in Murray anyway, not since I've been here. Yeah, so that's kind of what I had mentioned a little bit earlier is that we, we were not guilty of some of these where these were going to city councils. Um a lot of times the, these subdivisions would then become politicized. Um because, you know, the, the city council is an elected body and so they are more informed and, and more held to an elected position.
So as a zoning change was still at the city council?
Zoning changes and text amendments, yes, those will still go to the city council. Because those are, yeah, that is not modifying lot lines.
So this is just more out of pure curiosity, um do you think this will be a faster process from start to finish?
No, no, not just, almost purely because we have to extend our process. Um overall, um statewide, I think it will, it's gonna, kinda how I explain it. Um I think I explained it to the attorney's office. It's kind of leveling everybody out, right? So most of the state is gonna speed up their process significantly. Um but some other cities that are a little bit ahead of the curve, um it's gonna slow us down a little bit. So everybody's being a little bit kind of even um by it. I wouldn't, I, I would say it's a little bit. Yeah, it's gonna slow us down a little bit. I hope not too much. Yeah.
Okay, I, I wanna go back to Travis Nae's question because I'm not sure I quite understood. So if someone's building in the MCCD zone, it still will go before the MCCD design committee or whatever that's called?
Mm-hmm. Yeah, so let, let's take
They're not skipping that if they're subdividing something.
Correct.
They're still going to do that.
Correct, yeah, either way, so.
Yeah.
So you could have one project with multiple applications. Let's take the Wyatt, for example, which was a condominium project that you guys heard in June of twenty twenty-two. Um that was about twenty-six, I think, condominiumized multifamily units. So it had technically two applications. It had a design review application and then it had a subdivision application.
Okay.
And so what the uh MCCD review committee was, reviewed was the design review application. They did not review the subdivision application.
That makes sense.
Um so, and then you guys reviewed both. Um so that's kind of what it is. So if, if somebody were to come back and propose the Wyatt, but it was all multifamily, they weren't subdividing, right? It would just go to the MCCD review committee and then to you guys. Um just like in, like, kinda like a conditional use permit or a site plan review.
Okay, thank you.
Well, I guess I just have a, not a question, but just for my understanding, I guess. So um because the concept review is now optional, it feels like there's they, they used to get a lot of information from that and could get things kind of set up, right? And so then it was a pretty fast process depending on the developer between preliminary and subdivision or to final. But what it sounds like to me now is that if they skip and don't do concept review, they're gonna come to the preliminary and it's gonna be a much bigger lift between preliminary and final for them because they, they might be coming and getting brand new information.
Correct.
Because they did not do anything before.
Correct. Yeah, so what, and this actually gets into that point a little bit more as well. Um kind of how you had mentioned in, in the pre-meeting about how in the, in the text, it looks like we removed traffic in traffic studies, which for the record, we didn't remove them. Um it, it just states in the application, you, you have to submit a complete application. So we have to be very detailed in our application of what's required and what's not. And so we will review any application against that. Um sorry, any submittal against that application. So we have to be very clear on that and that will hopefully catch a lot of the stuff that we don't have to do as much heavy lifting on because then we can say, oh, I'm sorry, you don't meet. You're missing this, this and this from the application, we're rejecting your application. And that way, that's our only way of saying.
That makes sense, but that's assuming that they're missing items on the application. If they're missing something from the ordinance, like they give you an application that's seventy feet tall and a zone that's only allowed thirty-five feet or something like that, technically the application's complete and we have to catch it in the preliminary and they have to fix it between the preliminary and the final.
And actually, that would not be a complete application because it doesn't, it would not meet the ordinance.
Meeting ordinance is one of the
It will, yeah, it, it will be in there that it will need to meet that and that we can send it back and say, you need to revise your plans. We're not accepting this application at this time.
So in that case, if it doesn't meet an ordinance, let's say, you say, look, this is not a complete application, we're sending it back to you. Your fifteen days hasn't started at that point?
Doesn't start, no, this is how we're doing it.
Yeah.
Um how we're doing it is we're having them submit an application, we're not taking any fees until we have deemed that it is complete and then we will charge them the fee for the application. That completes the application.
So you have to determine if it's complete within fifteen days. If it's not, you hand it back to them and say, try again. Then they can try again and the fifteen day starts all over at the second, if, if they didn't do it properly the first time.
And
If I drew something on a piece of paper, said, here's my application and ten days later you hand it back and say, this is not a complete application, I would have to resubmit and then the timeline starts over. Is that correct?
That is correct, yeah. And I don't anticipate, so uh Susan's done a great job setting up a meeting for us every Wednesday to review applications. Um we've had it on the calendar for a couple of months now. Um we haven't had to use it yet, but it's at least in our minds, you know? Um because we're, we're officially taking applications for January fourth now. So we're gonna have to start looking at, you know, start collecting those and change our mindset. It, it's, it's gonna be a change for, for all of us and staff um to kinda change the way we take applications. So, but I don't anticipate, that gives us a good window of fifteen days. Say like we get inundated with, I don't know, ten applications, you know? We have time to review those for adequate completeness. Currently, wh- what would happen is that we would just get something, typically our, our deadlines were on Thursdays at ten AM. At two PM, we'd get some rando person off the street going, hey, I just, I need to submit this application, please put me on the planning commission. I was told that if I do it by Thursday, I'll get off. And we were like, fine, you know? And, and then we review it and we're like, oh, it's missing a bunch of stuff, but we told them, fine, you know? So this is, this is giving us a little bit more buffer. I'm hoping overall, it's going to increase the quality of applications. Um because we're, we're doing this same fifteen day review for all applications. Um because it would be much too difficult to separate, okay, subdivisions, we're doing this. Everything else, we're just taking them in as normal. We're just making it a streamlined process across the board, not arbitrary. Um so that's kind of where they're at.
I have to say, it all sounds great and all makes sense, but I also have to say, it makes me a little uncomfortable that we're leaning on an application that doesn't exist yet. If we had it in front of us, we'd be like, oh yeah, you've covered everything. But right now, we just keep saying we're going to, we, we don't, we will.
So application, and I apologize being a little bit blunt in this, but applications are kind of a staff thing. We, you wouldn't approve the application to be used. That's gonna be more along our
But then it would
Part of what makes us uncomfortable, I think, is that you're taking stuff out of here and saying, oh, oh, it'll be on the application.
Correct. And, and the reason why it's being taken out of there, um kind of like I had mentioned in, in the uh pre-meeting is that once it's listed in the ordinance, I can't ask for anything other than what is listed in the ordinance. So if I say, say like for some reason we listed, you have to provide a whole list of items, but we'll just use, we'll, we'll keep with the transportation thing. Say somehow we missed and said that a traffic study wasn't included in there, right? Wasn't in the ordinance. I can't ask for that because it's not listed in the ordinance.
But couldn't you say, we require a traffic study, a this, a this, and then other requirements listed on the application? You could do that. I mean, I'm not a lawyer, but I'm pretty sure you could. I, I mean, I'm not, I'm not sure I have an issue with, with how it's written. I, I do understand the issue though. I understand that at one point we wrote it and we codified it because we thought it was important. And now we're turning it over to a group of four people that may or may not live in Murray and may and may not care. I'm not saying you guys don't.
It may not be here tomorrow.
But, you know, in twenty years from now, it, it could be some jerk that we don't like.
Sure.
And he can change the application and it can be whatever he decides, you know, that day is.
Sure, and I mean, it's more than just, it, it would be more than just that. You would have to get an entire department to sign off on that, right?
Well, you'd have to have a department lead, with a tarmac, a department lead with a red pen could do whatever he wants, right, for the application, in theory, I'm just saying.
Not necessarily. You have, you have your reviewing departments. We have our, you know, our engineers and stuff that are gonna say, where is
I know, but there's no one in the Murray code that says that the application for a subdivision approval um cannot be changed by the department head.
That's correct. However, that also does, that, to kinda flip side of that, all of our applications. Nothing in our app, uh our conditional uses don't reference applications. Our site plans don't reference applications. Our design reviews don't reference applications.
True, but they also have requirements though in code, right?
No.
None at all?
No. It doesn't, it doesn't state for a conditional use, you shall supply a site plan, a landscape plan, a
Sure.
Parking plan.
But also, I mean, I support what you're saying. Several times in our ordinances, we refer to the city engineer or the, which I giggle every time because it's so small town because is there actually someone in our department that's titled the city engineer? Isn't it engineering department in which you have some structure in which things are approved? And, and often we say the, the city engineer or the director of
Yeah, and, yeah.
The department.
It, it is the city engineer. He is, our engineer is the city engineer.
I mean, I think I'm fine, like I said, I think I'm fine with how it's written, but I do understand the
I do understand it, for sure.
I do think we have a recourse, you know, if someone comes in here and says, you know what, I don't like traffic studies, I don't like this, then we could always change it back. I mean, we'd have to, it would be a process.
You can always, you could always say, why aren't we getting this staff? And then staff will have to explain it. And then you can say, you know, we want this addressed and reviewed and brought back up.
And I'm just saying, we don't have the authority to approve the application process you do or so. But um it's putting a lot of weight on whoever has to create this application because they have to make sure they don't forget anything. We're given hundreds of assignments and you have to make sure all of this because everyone here has a good intention and does good work and has produced good work and it's gonna be fine. But it's also strange that we're putting all this weight on one, the city is putting weight on one person versus having it in front of us before we
For sure, and I get that. And I, I would actually, I, I want to say that it isn't on one person, thankfully. Um I've had, so specifically Um, I've had, so specifically I found, so the state, the league of, sorry, the league of cities and towns. Um, recommended using Lehigh's subdivision application, they said it's a really good complete one. Uh, I took it, um, reviewed through it and then I actually farmed it out to our city engineer. So it's not just one person that's gonna be doing it, we, it is a team effort. To make sure that everything is addressed, that we can address in our, in our applications, it's. There's multiple eyes going to be reviewing.
Can we not as a planning commission, um, require them to do a traffic study in our action to approve the preliminary subdivision?
What do you, sorry, what do you mean?
When we approve the preliminary subdivision.
Mm-hmm.
Can we not say, and you will do a traffic study?
So I think he's saying, if, if we forget something on the application, if there's something that's forgotten, we probably could cover it in conditions.
We could, but we would never see it again.
Yeah.
Yes, well, we're, we're not done with this yet. That's my next question. Through this whole process, the planning commission gets to see this one time in the preliminary subdivision approval?
Correct.
And why can't we see it again in the approval by the staff, the fourth line down there from the bottom? Instead of the staff approving, why cannot the planning commission approve without?
A public hearing.
Public hearing.
I like that.
Let's see, hold on.
No, yeah, and that's, that's another part of this, the state code is.
So in a public meeting, but not a public hearing, is that what you're saying?
One public hearing, what did it say?
Well, Zach's looking that up, just go back to the concept review, um, I know you, some of you were questioning in that, we can only. Um, we can't require it, but. Most people, when you explain it to them at the counter and say, and explain it to them, and I'll tell you, it's a big. It's, it's the biggest bang for their buck they'll ever get because it's a whopping seventy-five dollars. And it is a wealth of information that they get back that really helps them. Then modify or fine tune their project and it actually, it, it, it's invaluable for them and most, most of the time when we suggest it. I don't know that I've ever said anybody, hardly ever, I don't even remember if anybody saying they didn't wanna do.
My concern with this is that. We, we get to see this one time. And the public gets to see it one time and I think we like. Our constituents enough to be able to say, the planning commission needs to see this again. And whether we vote on it or not, uh, I think that's a, a question for this group. Uh, but if the staff is approving it. Um, I don't know why the planning commission can't see it again and approve it as well. For our constituents.
I, I don't know if I, I don't know if I feel as strongly as Mr. Hacker. Uh, exactly, and it might be because I feel like our city has done a wonderful job and. All of our, vast majority of our applicants are very civil and very willing to produce good products. But I'm hearing what Mr. Hacker's saying and exactly what he's saying was my concern that our constituents would have. I feel like we live in a time in which there's very little trust in government and there's a large divide and whenever. Something is taken away from the public, there's suspicion.
We can hold it right there, do you want to stop right there?
Which one?
You go down, yeah.
This is number nine, I think. We go back up to number seven, sorry, just so we can.
And nine A, nine A, is that the one you're talking about?
There you go, so nine B is your answer.
So we could have a presentation of the final.
We could see the final, just not the preliminary.
But not have a vote on the approval of it.
Wait.
Concurrent processing, no, it's not that same, some subdivisions, we do preliminary and final together.
We may not. May not require planning commission approval, but you could get a final, like we could have a presentation about what the final was. Staff could make a presentation. But it would have.
An announcement that we've. I mean, that's real.
And, and what changes maybe or what, what?
If any changes were.
Right, yeah, what happened.
And, and probably what would be most, most appropriate is that if there are changes, probably bring.
That you could have a presentation, so wouldn't be. Presented, it wouldn't have a public comment and it wouldn't be voted on for approval, but it would be a.
Probably wouldn't even, so when we would agenda, like agendize it, agen, I think that's the word. Um, is, we'd probably have it under like announcements.
It may not, I think, means.
Will not. No, shall, shall means it will not.
It may not require planning commissioner city council approval.
In which case, to me, that's saying.
You're getting the legalese here. I might have to ask this one, um.
Can we have a professional opinion on this?
Yeah, that would be great. Ways and shals are, are the, uh, work of attorneys.
We'll say that ways and shals are usually pretty clear, this one's poorly written. Uh-uh. But the way I read it is, uh, on that nine B, the may not, uh, probably could be read as a shall. May not require planning commissioner city council approval, we can, we can. Review it, permit it, but we can't require it. May not, may not require the planning commissioner city council.
Number A says, or number, number A, this is why I'm not a lawyer.
No, we, we all call it numbers.
Number As. It says may permit concurrent processing of the final subdivision pla- application with the preliminary subdivision pla- application. I read that as you can, so if you read A. It reads, you can do those at the same time, it is not telling us we have to do them at the same time.
So.
So if we read B, right after we read A, I would take. May not require planning commissioner city council approval, to me means you can. Pass it without their approval, but I, I think, I think you're right.
So I can, I can take this one real quick, um, so a lot of, what this is referring to. Is a lot, a lot of cities, Murray included, uh, did preliminary and final subdivision together. When it was less than ten lots. Um, and it, right, right, Murray currently does that, if it's a less than ten lot subdivision. You can do preliminary and final as one meeting. So, yes, if we were to take, you guys can say, so really this is taking an additional step out, this is taking the staff. Second review out is what it's doing, is saying, okay, if I bring you a. Fifteen lot subdivision, you guys can approve the preliminary and final right then. But that then prohibits staff from reviewing it at another level.
Well, don't do them together then.
Well, that's what I'm saying, but, but we're not, we're not planning to do them together, that's why we're doing preliminary and final, and then final.
See it again and approve it.
No. State says no, it does say that, I'm sorry.
May.
I'm sorry, it may not.
As you just said, the one just before says may permit concurrent.
Exactly, may permit, but then the second one says may not.
But the concurrent, I think, with the preliminary final is, like we were saying, we have the option now in our code. To, well, it's not a complicated subdivision, it's a smaller one, five, six lots, to do both at the same time, preliminary and final.
Okay, what's Jeremy's point, that's a very good point.
Oh, I mean, I, again, I'm not an attorney, um, but I'm reading, I'm, as I read this and I'm reading nine A. Semi, it makes a statement, semicolon, and nine B. To me, it's tied, it ties them together and or. And so is that, is that, what I'm wondering, and again, this would be more of a legal opinion, it says. Is that, is nine B only present in the case where nine A is present?
I would have.
Is nine B only effect, in effect?
That's a good point and.
Nine A's in effect.
I, I think Mark slightly nodded his head yes. Yeah. Um, but I, I think that's a good point, um, cause yeah, when and is included there, um.
And it, and I would concur, it's horribly written.
It, it is.
But that's what happens when you get.
Yeah, no, it's, it's, that's, this is super, yeah, this is bad.
They've already, they've already said they're going to be amending some of the.
Yeah, but I, I would, I would make the point that I think nine B may only be in effect when nine A is in effect.
But I, I think you're probably right.
Right, it's, 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 it's very ambiguous, right?
What, when do we have, we have to enact this by when?
February.
February first.
Yep. Sorry, I'm trying to get to something, go ahead. Yeah, give me just one second. Yes.
In, in looking at this and. Looking at this and your explanation of this in the previous one. It looks like there's, and I know you've talked, and maybe your explanation is, is. What you were talking about with the ex, the application. But it looks like there's more opportunity for oversight or for missing things in this. Flow chart than in the other one.
It puts the brunt on.
Well, I, I think it puts more onus on the developer, really.
It does.
They got, they have to get a full package up front, otherwise they're just gonna give it a spin cycle.
Exactly, and that's the point, so thi- this is kind of what, this was one of the, one of the benefits that came out of the league's legislation. Is that, um, so when we do a review. So over here, you can see on the, on the left-hand side here that we only have a total of four city reviews, right? Um, a lot of times what would happen is an applicant, we would send our comments back. Um, I know, for example, the Boyer, for example. No, I'm talking about just total. Yeah, so just total, you know, for example, Boyer, we sent them two rounds of reviews and they addressed nothing. Um, and didn't address any of the comments. However, it does state in the state language and in this language here, that it has to be addressed. It has to be written down and addressed every comment made by the city. And if it's not, it's not considered a complete review. And so it sends it back to the developer to address everything that's.
And the clock stops.
And the clock stops, yep. Yep.
So they're, they're gonna, they're gonna, this will change, I'm gonna predict in a couple of years because developers will complain because they're gonna.
Correct.
Not be able to get their, their, their applications through with staff.
Correct.
Yeah. Well, but it happens two years, you saw, you saw it here.
Everybody watching, or Jeremy Lowery.
The whole.
I'll, I'll, exactly.
Probably the whole one person watching.
Exactly.
Yeah.
Oh, I, I know you probably didn't finish your presentation.
I mean, largely, it's, it's, it's pretty much done.
So let me ask a question then, so I'm trying to think of, it's hard for me to differentiate. You know, approving a subdivision compared to all the other stuff we do. But when we've done a preliminary in the past. What things have we looked for in the final subdivision approval? I mean, I, I'm trying to think what those are, like, I'm trying to think what's something that we, they come back to us for the final subdivision approval. And we're making sure they did what, I can't think of what those are.
Fencing might be one, fencing, open space, if it's PUD, maybe you required a particular.
We're just making sure that they put them on the plans.
Yeah, yes.
Yep.
So if we said, hey, we want you to do a, this type of fencing or whatever, I don't know what it would be. When they come back for the final review, all we're doing is looking at a plan and going, yep, they put the fence, right?
Correct.
Correct, yeah.
Ninety-five percent of the time, that's the case.
The other changes that maybe the city engineer required or somebody else.
Is the subdivision ever where we're looking at like a central amenity or something? That is, right? So in the past, so in the past, we've, they've come to us with. A central amenity that we don't think is, meets the requirements, so in that case. Let's say we look at it and we're like, look, you're supposed to have a central amenity, I can't remember the wording is.
No, I get it, yeah.
You know what I mean?
Yeah.
Where we looked at and said, yeah, this doesn't meet that requirement, so then would we have to then? Vote no on the preliminary and have them come back? Or would we have to just specify what we want them to, be, it's hard for us to specify with specificity. What we want to see in the final, um, approval. Because we, I, I mean, I don't wanna say, okay, you presented a thing here and you have a, a, a square of grass. But that is not a gathering place or whatever our code says.
Yeah, no.
And so we want you to now put floor benches and we want you to have a flagpole and, which I don't think we should be doing.
Right, so you're not wrong, um, that is the more complex nature of it.
Hey Zach.
Yeah.
To add on to his, I, I think maybe it's what you're asking. Potentially is, if it doesn't have some of the things that you're looking for, like what you say in the bench and open space, whatever. Could they continue it and then it come back with what you're asking?
Preliminary, yeah, you could continue it through the next meeting saying, this does not meet.
But couldn't we just take it?
So, that one is, it's kind of subjective.
Sure.
Yeah, so. I, I do worry.
If we feel like they did not meet the requirements that are laid out in the code.
In the code, yes, and if you made that finding that it is not.
We made a finding that said, here's why we are going to vote no, we'd have to specify what that is.
Correct.
Not be arbitrary and capricious in our decisions.
Correct, hundred percent.
A good example of what we're talking about is, was the Brad Reynolds project on, over on Allendale, sixty-third. Where when preliminary came in, they had a detention basin in conjunction with just open space, it was just lawn. And, and they thought that was their open space, but you folks wanted to see at least a couple of park benches on it. And you required that so that when it came back for final, it had that, to me, that's, I don't think that's.
Sure, but what I don't wanna do is, I don't wanna require, I don't think the commission should be sitting here going. Okay, you, you, a retention basin isn't, doesn't meet what is required here. So, we're, we're gonna make up what that is.
Sure.
I don't think we wanna do that, so I think going forward, if this is approved. I think what we need to have staff do is. We need, when it comes before us, it's going to have to be clear on what they're, what they're doing. And it has to make sure it meets all those things, because if it doesn't, we're going to either need to, you know, not approve it. Or continue it, but if we did continue it, could we say, hey, we're continuing this because this doesn't meet it, so go back and change your application?
Exactly, so that's what you wanna do, that, that's precisely what you wanna do, whenever you continue an item. You want to give them clear direction as to why you're continuing it and what you expect to see back. Um, and let me also. What we as staff are gonna have to do as well is sever some, some things. So what you're asking for, right, like, for example, the, the case that you're using for like opens, like the, the usable open space. That is all associated with a planned unit development, a planned unit development is a, um. Is in essence a conditional use permit attached to a subdivision. So it is modifying the regulations of a subdivision with, um, a conditional use permit. So we, we need to do a better job as staff in severing those. Because it does state, the, the law, the state law does state that you can, you can go back and. Put a hold on the conditional use permit and say, we want this addressed as part of the conditional use permit, that open space. This stuff is largely dictating tradition, and it's not gonna happen very often in Murray, to be honest with you. Because a lot of our land is already spoken for, there are traditional subdivisions. So for example, you know, out in American Fork, or I almost said American Eagle. Um, um, American, it's not even American Fork, what am I thinking of? Out there.
It's actually American Fork.
Point, yeah, that one, yeah, somewhere out there, Saratoga Springs, something that has a lot of land and a lot of housing going up, where you have five hundred.
Eagle, Eagle Mountain.
Yeah, that one, so I was getting there, Eagle Mountain, American Eagle, you know, eagle, there we go, anyway. Where you get hundred, hundreds of unit, single-family homes and you're reviewing traditional subdivisions. That have nothing special attached to them, they just want the typical, you know, baseline subdivision. That's what this is really affecting, is just your typical baseline subdivision. Anything modifying, so condos, um, well, that one's a, PUDs largely is what you're gonna be affecting. Are, um, that's gonna be half, that, that is, that is a land use. Attachment to a subdivision application, so we're gonna have to do a better job as staff as separating those out. Um, where we'll have to explain, you know, what's required and what's not, so.
So they would come twice?
No, we haven't. They would, so you, you know how sometimes we, when we have like a. General plan amendment and a zone map amendment, we present them together.
But you would vote.
But they, but they are two separate votes, we might have to start doing that, so you approve the planned unit development.
Right.
And then you approve the subdivision.
And we could make changes or things to the planned unit, like to the conditional uses.
Correct, yeah, so that's where that's gonna be.
Flexible than the subdivision.
Mostly, yeah, it's more flexible, for sure.
Trying to think of example, this might not be a good example, but I feel like.
Trying to think of example, this might not be a good example, but I feel like every once in a while, an item will come to us and they won't have the landscaping plan finalized yet, or they won't have the dumpster design finalized yet, and we're often told, don't worry about it. They'll have to have that before they get their license. That's a business. This is a subdivision. But.
Same difference, yeah.
But I'm assuming that will happen less, because from now on, we would have to turn it down because.
It doesn't meet the application.
Like I said, I, I'm anticipating us getting higher quality applications across the board. Because we will be able to say, we don't have this, as opposed to coming in, throwing us, you know, a hand-drawn piece of paper and saying, approve it. So.
Hey, one, one point on the continuing, if you were to continue something, typically when it's continued, it has to be to a date certain. And then that kind of puts them, you know, kind of like, okay, are you gonna have this ready in three weeks so we can schedule it for May thirty-first, you know, whatever?
Yep.
Um, kind of then is, I don't know, that's a, that's a question that we will have to address. I don't know how that's gonna pan out. Because typically, when an application is accepted and is before you folks, developer has a certain expectation for a time period to be approved. And if we continue it, we typically cannot continue, especially under this new process, I think. Correct me if I'm wrong.
No.
To date uncertain. Cause then that would have, we would have to rehear it, re-notify everything, and then that's, in essence, another public hearing.
Yeah.
So that might have something we're gonna have to.
We'll have to hash that out.
Think about, work that out, yeah.
More too. And again, but again, those, that would also be, you know, again, kind of under that planned unit development thing. Because, but I mean, typically, you'd, you'd vote on both separately. So. But that's weird. I have to think about that more. But, yeah, we'll, 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 we'll look at some of how that language works.
What Travis was saying might be more accurate than, so, or tabling or postponing an item, more likely we would turn down an item if there's time restraints.
And that might be, we'll, we'll have to look at that. I'll have to talk to attorneys. Yeah. And figure out how we would deal with that if it were to come up.
Yeah, cause I'm concerned about, I'm concerned about the timeline there. If we're tabling something to a future meeting.
You wouldn't table, you'd continue.
Continue, sorry. Continue. But if we continue to, even till the next meeting, that's two weeks away. Are we now in compliance with?
They probably, and they probably would not be able to re, turn around and redo their plans typically. I mean, I don't know, you know.
Two weeks. And if we postpone something for two weeks, and then we had the meeting canceled for some reason, was there a liability in that?
Again, that's something that we, we can, I mean, once we get to that tabling, you know, continuing items thing, we can, we can look into that. Cause may, and once.
Well, I think also with the continuing, we'd have to, you'd have to ask the developer, you know, is it possible within three weeks to have this,
Turned around.
redo this and return around? And if so, let's get G for February tenth or whatever, whatever that time period is.
Right. And I think it would, i- if, you know, a lot of times we don't have the bad actors that are willing to do these kinds of things. It's, it's when it's the bad actors, that's the ones that scare me. The ones that say, no, I won't do things. So we just have to be a little bit more clear.
If they see that, you can see, well, this is what the application looks like. You know, therefore, we won't touch it.
Yeah, and I mean, a- again, I'm hoping that because of our, we'll have a little bit more time to review applications and look at them in depth a little more. Cause a lot of times, to be, you know, a hundred percent upfront and honest with you, we don't get to look at these plans very much sooner than when we're preparing to write the staff report. Which is after we've already sent notices out. We don't get a chance to review.
But with this, you'll have fifteen days.
Will have that period where we're checking it against an application and saying, okay, yes.
The only thing that's improved there is an application checklist to check on, because if you have a concept review required, you should have time for every department to look at it.
In concept review, yes. But again, we don't always get concept reviews. Or they change significantly between concept review and, and preliminary. Yeah.
So is it a possibility to add a final presentation to the planning commission?
I would prefer not to codify it.
What would be the purpose of that?
But we can continue to, we can start doing that as a staff.
To, to what end, I guess?
I think more to, so I feel like subdivisions, especially the subdivisions that we have loved to develop in the city, are controversial to their neighbors, right? And I feel like if it just, if they just have, yes, they come and make their public comment at the preliminary, but if they have a way to come and see, I think that's sometimes what's helpful, and I always liked being able to say, like, you'll have another chance to come back, right, at the final? And now they don't. But if they had a way to come back and say, like, okay, here are the things we, you know, this is what the final subdivision that is getting approved looks like. Even if they can't make a public comment and it's not getting voted on, it's at least a, a front, a front-facing to the public of like, you, you said your concerns, and like, now we're, we're letting you know, like, what the final subdivision is.
So I mean, I, I can, I can see the merit in what you're, you're wanting to do. But I mean, that would assume, cause I wouldn't, we, we wouldn't be, we wouldn't be taking any action on it. You wouldn't be.
Right. It would just be, because we're eliminating a public comment, right? And, and a lot of times, these are big, controversial.
Right.
Subdivisions that be, because of it, because we don't have any big, just normal subdivisions that we're doing in Murray anymore, they are in areas or, or against neighbors, or there's things that, that I do feel like would just help having some final information, rather than it just was signed off at the, at staff level and like, now you have your backyard torn up. You know what I, do you get what I'm saying?
I do to a degree. And, and I, I do see, again, I, I see the merit in it, for sure. But I just don't know if it's, if it's helpful.
I think it's helpful to our constituents.
Do you think it would be helpful to take, okay, let's use your case, exactly, let's take it. Comes back, we're gonna do a presentation. Here's, here's what we wanted to have it done, blah, blah, blah. They've done this, 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 and this. Thanks, folks. Can't take any comment.
I mean, and we wouldn't notice it either.
Yeah, they would have to be following.
They would have to be following.
But do you think that they would have a certain expectation if they come to that meeting that they would, could say something?
We just let them know that they're public officials at the state level are disappointed that.
That'd be an opportunity to say, as a city, we respect our constituents and we want you to know about it. Unfortunately, the state has tied our hands.
But that still doesn't mean that we can't vote on it, Zach.
You can't.
Yes, we can. We just went over the language. It says may. May does not mean you will.
Okay. So you wanna make that change? You're more than welcome to request that change.
So I, 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 I actually have a question before, but I guess, I wonder, I'm wondering how much, if, if we, if we are a city that starts doing a bunch of continuances, how much legal risk do we have if we're not super narrow and super specific about why we're doing the continuance?
You, you have to be.
But, but, but I mean, like, on, I, I, I mean, you know, let, let's take an example. You use the Brad Reynolds one, for instance. Okay, so we do a continuance on that because we wanna see the green, the open space and the gathering, gathering area. He comes back, he says, you know what, instead of, in, instead of, instead of going back to you guys, I'm just gonna have my attorney cite the, cite the code. Okay, cite, cite, cite the law and say, we actually already did it. And, I mean, are we, are we just gonna get bullied by that?
So, yeah.
You could.
We are at the, we are at the peril of the depths of the developers' pockets.
That, that's what, that's what I'm saying.
You, you, and we do run that risk. Because the state is becoming more, less discretionary from planning commissions.
Sure.
And, and less subjective, and we have to be more.
Understanding there's a risk there.
Yep.
I would, I would, I strongly agree with, with Ned and with Marin and others that, you know, if, if we, I think we should very actively pursue an understanding of the language if there is the ability for a second, a, a second go around with the planning commission. I think it'd be great to, to, you know, to, to get some clarification on that.
I, so I mean, a- as much as you can trust me, I suppose, I've attended every single training that the state has put on.
And they specifically said.
And they have this, I've taken every word from this, from state recommendations. And, yeah, I've, I've attended, I think, four trainings on this. I've also, I've reached out to land use attorneys. His name is Godfrey. I, I don't remember his first name. And he has said, yeah.
This is it.
This is it.
It's a mandate, not a recommendation?
This is a mandate.
It's, 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 it puts us in a real tough situation.
It does, and it's not easy. It's not, it's, it's, trust me, it's not fun for me to stand up here and, and tell you that you shall not do
Right.
the public work. It's, it's not fun. Because I don't have problems with final subdivision approvals, you know, coming before you. I'm just going off of what the state has said and from what I have received from Legals perspective.
Even Zach in his conversation says, you shall.
Yeah, he said, no. He said, no, the writing says they.
I'm just saying, he was more clear than they were when they wrote it.
But if they didn't write it clear, then we don't have to follow it.
No, I don't know about that. You know, a, a good thing might be for us to get like a twenty thousand-word think piece from our, our legal friends for the, the meeting on the eighteenth of next month.
No.
When you're not here.
Correct. I think that I, if I, I mean, if I'm remembering correctly, most of the time when we had a final subdivision approval, we, I mean, we were just quickly going through what happened before, and we were making sure, like you said, the fence was where it was. And I think we could just be more specific in the preliminary and say, you know, here's what we want. If we can, if we can do that. And otherwise, if they're complying with, you know, what they need to comply with, then we're, we have to approve it. And if they aren't, then we should not approve it. And.
And can I, can I just, real quick, right before you say something, you're making the exact point that the state legislature said, is that planning commissioners are reviewing these at final and saying, oh, there's nothing here. We're, we're reviewing this, we're double-checking something that has already been addressed.
And I think if we can be specific, so you, as a planning staff, you know, we said this, this, and this, and you're just making sure that they're complying with this, this, and this, just like you do with all the other things they have to comply with, right?
You can't let that find you, though. Are you going to be maybe bringing up a problem or that you, that's been discovered and not giving the developer an option on how to fix it? You're dictating what has to be done.
I, I guess I'm, I.
Well, I'm trying, I'm trying to build on what he was talking about.
I mean, I think, I suppose a commission could have a conversation with the developer.
We have to be specific about the solution to, about the solution to a problem. You're not giving the developer any options on, on.
I think we.
How to resolve it.
But we can have a conversation with the developer in the preliminary and say, hey, we don't think this is meeting this requirement. And we could come up with what that.
I think what, I think what Commissioner Henry is saying is that after it's been taken care of at the preliminary, if a new issue arises between preliminary and final.
I think candidly.
Not exactly.
If, if we look back on the last, the ten or fifteen subdivisions that we've reviewed all the way through the entire process, it's really uncommon for us to find something at final that we didn't catch and staff didn't catch prior to getting us to that point. I, I can't think of any specific examples of something we've said at, at final that, oh, you've gotta go back in and fix this.
It's also uncommon to have public comment.
But motherly and say, something I said earlier, if we had the application process already done, this would be a slightly different conversation. And I feel like that's very relevant because it occurs with other things sometimes as well. You know? And so, I, I mean, if the application had already been filled out, then we would know, we have less concerns possibly. Not a hundred percent, I mean, some of the concerns persist, persist.
The commission is the land use authority, is it not?
It is the land use authority for preliminary.
So we're relinquishing our land use authority to the staff to approve it?
No.
Is that what you're saying?
No, I am not.
Oh, well, that's what this says, though.
That is what the state is saying. That is not what Zach is saying.
No. Zach, it says may. And all we're saying is.
Like I said, if you want to make a, if you would like to make an amendment, you can do so. What I'm saying, pardon me? I said, if you would like to make an amendment to it, you are more than welcome to do so.
Okay.
Because, because like I, this is, like I said.
But you don't, so you don't read this.
I do not.
You don't read the statute from the state the same way?
I do not. No.
So you think may means?
I think may not. If it were may, comma, not, may be a different story.
They use may in the, in the item right before it.
I mean, I'm the one who pointed that out, but I, I tend to think Zach's right. I think they're saying, you may not do this, but it is, it is not clear. I could say that.
I, I think what, at least my feeling personally, is that because, and again, I'm trusting Zach, I'm trusting Steph, that because our application process is going to be more thorough, that's almost like our preliminary review that we've been doing typically. So, so I feel like the same steps are happening. It's just our preliminary review will now be happening through the entire application process. So when it's coming to us, those, all of those Ts have been crossed and Is have been dotted. Because we won't, we won't be seeing it before that, it won't come to the preliminary subdivision review until it's a complete application. And to be a complete application means it's embedded through all of those parts.
Here, so. Can we, can we read nine and ten real fast? This is, to me, this is really fascinating, actually.
Well, actually, let me, let me, I will read, I will go above and beyond and read eight, nine and ten. Because there are, there are specific things in here that actually call it out.
That's perfect.
Eight is, if a preliminary subdivision application complies with the applicable municipal ordinances and the requirements of this section, the administrative land use authority shall approve the preliminary subdivision application.
So let's just, so let's just recap. So if this, if, 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 if a preliminary subdivision complies, there are no exceptions, we shall.
You shall apply, you shall have. But also, the, the name of who shall.
The land, administrative land, administrative land use authority.
Correct.
That's, and that's, that's us.
That's you. Number nine. A municipality shall review and approve or deny a final subdivision plat application in accordance with the provisions of this section and municipal ordinances which, A, may permit concurrent processing of the out, final subdivision plat application with the preliminary subdivision plat application. Am I just saying things over and over? With a preliminary subdivision plat application and may not require planning commission or city council approval. Number nine. Now, number ten, if a final subdivision application complies with the requirements of this section, the applicable municipal ordinances and the preliminary, preliminary subdivision approval granted under section nine A, a municipality shall approve the final subdivision application.
So how, after.
Not the administrative land use authority.
Well, so how, after, how I, how I'm reading this is, eight, so the preliminary subdivision, if it, if it complies, planning commission shall approve.
Correct.
A municipality shall review and approve or deny this final subdivision plat. It may, and it may, it may not, or it may require so, planning commissioner, or planning commission, or city council approval. I view that as, as nine A gives discretion. But whoever, whoever, whoever is, is doing it, if it meets the ordinances, they shall approve in, in number ten.
Correct.
So I, I think that it's, I think there's discretion in nine, personally.
Is there a definition of municipality?
Of course there is.
Yeah, well, that's, 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 that's the city or county.
I would love to show you the stuff, definitions. Hold on, that's the wrong one.
How long do we have to do this before we actually get a law degree?
Before what?
We get a law degree.
You know, in olden times, before law school, you would, you'd, you'd, you know, just studying, you'd get it, right?
I wanna say, I also feel a little bit uncomfortable that it feels like we're arguing with Zach, like. we're arguing with Zach, like Zach is the authority that we're arguing with.
That's okay.
I'd like to see what the other, how the other cities are interpreting this, so I don't have.
Well, I don't, I don't want to argue with Zach, we're just reading, we're just, we're just reading, we're just reading the, the code.
Oh, thank you.
Ned's arguing with Zach, the rest of us are just, you know.
There's not a definition.
It doesn't have one.
I just want our constituents to know that we're looking out for them. And, and like so many of our other, um, items that we look at, there are, they're already, if, we can't, we can't disapprove them because they meet all ordinances. In which case, we're stamping it. So they're already approved.
Well, kind of my point was, why is Zach the gatekeeper? We can see what other cities are doing too. Why are we putting all this all on his shoulders? We can talk, the lawyers from other cities can tell us their opinion too. And if, and, you know, it doesn't have to just, right? We can, we can investigate further unless you're telling me that's Ja- Zach's job and he's already done it, but I don't know.
I think it gives us another opportunity to look at an item that our constituents might be concerned about and give them reassurance that, um, we're not rubber stamping it. We're looking at it again and we're approving it.
So, so Commissioner Hacker, would you recommend then, would you, you would be more comfortable? You think that you read that completely different and that we can approve the final or you're not sure?
No, I read it that way. May, may does not mean you will.
I, I agree, we have discretion. I think the city, I think the city, I think municipalities have discretion in, in, in section nine to define how that's, how it's done. And I think discretion could be staff, and I think it could be the, the planning commission. I think it could be the city council too, based on, based on nine B.
So you're saying that it's saying, it doesn't have to be the planning commission or the, it doesn't have to be, but.
But, but whoever it is better, if, if it meets all the ordinances, they better, they better, they better approve it. Right, but, but, and what, what, what this is really saying is it's saying, if, if you're, the, 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 the preliminary and the final, if it meets the ordinances, whoever's set up to approve it has to approve it. That's what it's saying.
Yeah.
But it doesn't say who, who's going to approve it.
So if we took this and said, okay, we, you know, we can't agree on this, um, would you feel comfortable for, if the Murray City Legal Council decided that's how it was written, then would you agree with that? Or would you still, would you still say that we change it to be that we are going to do a final through the planning commission?
The city council is going to get this after we give them a recommendation. So they're going to decide one way or another.
That's true.
But I think we can give them a better recommendation than, um, the planning or the planning staff approving it. I think that's relinquishing our land use authority, um, and I don't particularly like that.
It is a delegated authority. Although it's ours to relinquish, it's delegated.
Mm-hmm. Well, we're, we're not, we're not going to do, I mean, it's the city council that's going to, that's going to vote on it, not us. We're.
Yeah.
You know, what we do here isn't binding, we're just making a recommendation.
I mean, but someone could make a motion that we forward a recommendation of this with the change that we want to have a, approve the final.
Or hear the final.
I think if you bring it back before a public forum without the opportunity for public input or for the commission approval, it's just going to be a, a light rod for unfortunate things.
I, I don't think anybody would show up, to be honest, at the, if we're just reviewing what already was approved. But I'm not against us doing it and trying it out. But if we leave it out of the code, then we could try it out. If it works and we get all these people and it makes it clearer to the public, then that's great. If it doesn't, then we don't do it.
I, I mean, how would, how would the planning commission feel about a recommendation that, um, was subject to Murray City legal, legal review? Um, uh, but would, would prefer that the, the Murray City Planning Commission continues to do the finals, continues to perform the final subdivision approval?
So.
I think they've already legally.
That's gonna, that's complicated because we have to put it somewhere in the code. I know. Um, honestly, what you would probably have to do is continue this to the next meeting and we'll probably have to have a December twenty first.
Is there any risk of lawsuits if we do that?
Why would it have to be December twenty first? Why couldn't it be January?
Because.
They're on the timeline.
This has to be done before February first of twenty twenty-four.
So January fourth is it before February first?
City council has to hear it twice.
Isn't it already in the code? It's already in the code.
What?
That the planning commission, uh, approved the final.
So.
It's been in the code, that's why we've been approving it.
Okay.
So you're saying, are you saying then that there's no requirements that we need to change before the February date because we are already in compliance?
We already changed it. We took out the, the public hearing for the final.
What I need you to do then is to specifically state in, in the redlined ordinance what you want kept in. Or we have to continue it and then I'll review it.
How long you want to be here?
That is up to you guys.
What's our meeting in January? What date?
It's January fourth.
We'll just tell the, the, um, city council they have to meet on the fifth and the sixth.
Wish I could.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
I don't have enough time to print it and send it over to them and do the noticing for that. There's a certain amount of time.
And we have to have your minutes drafted.
Planning, yeah, and there has to be a certain amount of time.
On the fly.
All right. Ned, Ned, do you have a, do you have a, do you have a suggestion for a, a, not as to what changes the red line to?
Okay, so, I mean, I think I'm okay with how it's written because I think what it's telling us is what Zach's saying. But we could vote to forward a recommendation for them not to approve this. The reasons why are because we don't agree with them, rewrite anything, right?
I mean, that's, that's.
We can expect by Y.
But yes.
Yeah, I understand.
Yeah.
But then the city council would get why we rejected it and then they can still vote.
They'll, they'll still vote.
All we're doing is a recommendation.
Yeah, I, I extremely recommend not doing that. I mean, that is entirely within. But I would prefer you don't do that because that makes my job one time's harder.
But then you're, you're leaning on, they'll listen to the meeting and read the minutes and then just make the one change in advance that we can't make on the fly.
Well, can't we add something to the final plat review and approval?
You can definitely add, you can, again, yeah.
Sixteen point one two point zero.
Yep, just dictate what you want me to change in it.
And then you'll have to do that in the motion, right? And then we'll have to vote on it.
Correct.
Yeah.
But you haven't had a public hearing yet.
Oh, yeah, so let's do that right now. Um, is everybody okay with doing the public hearing right now? I feel like we're going to be here for a while because all the people here, but.
You mean continuing?
No, I think they're, they want to do that.
Oh.
Let's, yeah, let's open up the public, um, comment period. So if you are here, which nobody is, so nobody here, I assume is going to give public comment. But if you're watching remotely, you can give public comment. Please email us at planningcommission@murray.utah.gov. And that is the only way we will get that. So I'm going to give you thirty seconds to send off an email. Hopefully you've been drafting it while we've been talking, if you're listening to us. I, I was gone about ten minutes ago, so. Just kidding. No, I love pretending like we're lawyers. Okay, Zach, any emails? Okay, we're going to go ahead and close the public comment period then, and then we can decide. If someone wanted to, we could do a motion just to approve it as it is and we can see how that rolls. Or if someone wants to make some changes, we could talk about those and then do a motion. I'm fine with whatever.
Well, I, I'd ask, um, Zach, where does it say in, in sixteen twelve zero one zero? That's the section final plat review and approval, but it doesn't say who approves it.
Then sixteen point one two point oh.
Could, could we make like a motion to send it to the city council? And in the meantime, get a definite, or try to get a definite answer from legal. No?
Dot eight zero? It's six, yeah, sixteen dot twelve, five, eight, no, eighty.
In no less than twenty thousand words.
Oh, so all they've done is, so I think you could, if you wanted, in sixteen dot twelve dot eighty, they've just strike commission and changed it with staff, correct? So couldn't they, so couldn't someone make a motion if they wanted to approve the, um, approve it as written, except for in sixteen dot twelve dot zero eight, maintain, um, planning commission where it has been changed to planning staff? That would be clear enough, would that not?
That would be clear enough.
And then you could present to.
The council.
And then, no, we have to change ninety two. You'd have to do an eighty and ninety. Nope.
You could just.
Ninety would still be staff.
Eighty and a hundred.
So you can just, you can just state the section because it's in a red line. We'll have to change the numbering anyway. You can just say sixteen dot twelve section requiring approval by planning staff.
No, it wouldn't because the planning staff has approved the final plat. No, the staff.
Yep. Oh, yeah, I guess you would have to change. Yeah, one hundred.
Maybe just a.
Change one hundred, sixteen dot twelve dot one hundred to when the planning commission has approved the final.
Change.
Yep.
Because we're approving it, so the final approval would be by the commission, not the staff, if we made that change.
But the plat is what has been approved.
So I think if someone wants to do that, I think they could make a motion to change sixteen dot twelve dot eighty and sixteen dot twelve dot one hundred to change it from planning staff back to planning commission as originally written. Or we could do something else.
Yeah, you could make the recommendation because it's going to go to city council anyway. And if they disagree or whatever, it's up to them.
If we took a vote on it, just to, I just want to clarify, if we took a vote and we didn't approve it as written, we could take another vote.
Yeah, you can decide, yeah.
Yep. But once the vote's approved, then the table, then the item's done. Yep, okay.
I guess I have a question for our attorney. I think maybe you tried to answer it before. Is there any wiggle room here? I mean, the, the section was ten? In that, in that section of the, well, I'm looking at ten.
So, so is what you're asking for our city attorney is if they think it's clear that Zach is presenting this properly?
No, I'm, I, I, well, maybe, but what I'm, what I'm asking.
Or can we?
If this amendment that we, we're talking about has any hope of passing muster from a legal standpoint with what's written here?
I mean, I think probably not, but I don't know, I don't know. It's all, I mean, I think we've made it clear that it's poorly written. And that, that I can tell you for sure, but.
Certainly.
You know, I think, to answer Mike's question, yes, you could. But, and so between the time from here to city council, our legal is going to go through it and they're going to see your suggested change.
Correct.
And they're going to say to the city council, hey, the planning commission is absolutely right or the planning commission is up in the night.
Sure.
Whatever, you know what I mean? And then the city council will.
Yeah, I agree. That's exactly what would happen, right? If we change this and they look at it and go, there's no, they're reading this completely wrong, they can not or shall not.
However, I mean, the attorneys can make that opinion. But the city council is relying on you as the land use authority to make the appropriate decision and they rely on your recommendation heavily. So, I mean, the burden really is on you because they are, they are, they are relying on you as the land use authority reviewing these land use topics.
I, I think for sure, um, you know, we could forward a recommendation to, to, to whatever we do. But we should also communicate to the city council that we think this is ambiguous one way or the other.
Could, could we get our attorney's opinion on, on one, on, on, on those, these three sections real fast?
Sure. By all means.
And, um, so would you, would you?
Sorry, I'm just making sure.
Yeah, I'm going to, I'm going to ask you a specific question.
Attorneys love that.
I know. I would, I need to go down and read Zach if you don't mind, so.
Oh, sorry. I'm, I'm, I'm being told to go everywhere.
I apologize. Okay.
That's okay.
So.
Yeah, you better.
My, my interpretation.
Yeah, I know.
Number eight, if the preliminary subdivision application complies with the municipal ordinances, land use authority shall approve the preliminary subdivision. Very clear. The municipality shall review and approve or deny a final subdivision plat in accordance with the provisions of this section and municipal ordinances which may permit concurrent processing, so they can process the final and the preliminary. And that may not require planning commission or city council approval, meaning that, that, that for B to be present, A must be present. Meaning that what I'm saying is that, that the, the act of, of doing a, 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 if you, if you, if a city chooses to do, if they choose to combine a preliminary and a final subdivision, then they do not have to have, that, that approval does not have to have planning commission or city council approval. Ten, so it's specific to, it is, in my reading, that that nine B is specific to nine. Does not carry forward to eight, to eight or ten. Ten, if, if the final subdivision of application complies with the requirements of the section, meaning it meets all the municipal ordinances, then the municipality must or shall grant that, that final subdivision approval. But it does not state what, or what group within the municipality shall do that. It could be staff. It could be, uh, planning commission, or it could be the city council, or it could be the mayor, for heaven's sakes. It could be anybody who's, who's duly appointed. I believe that it's, I believe it's open to, it's ambiguous as to who is the, who is, who is the, who is the, 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 that, that authority within the city. Do you agree with that opinion or do you disagree?
Well, and I think we're back to the same problem we've had along. I think that's a way you could read it.
Okay.
And that's why it's, and that's why it's, I won't say not helpful, but, um, that is part of the problem with it.
It's a strong argument either way, then it is not a definitive shall. It's, if there's a strong argument in interpreting the reading either way, equally strong argument, then it is definitively not a definitive shall. You have to, it's, there's wish, it's wishy washy. It's up for interpretation.
I will say, and, and, uh, we've met, uh, many times as we've, as we've gone through these, uh, with our office with Zach. And then the, uh, the red line that we presented to you and, and the presentation Zach has presented to you is what we've gathered, uh, from those conversations and what we've come up with. So, um, I don't know if that answers, but that's, the, what, what we've presented is, is how we've interpreted it as we've gone through this problem.
As a department. And then is that how other cities are, have we, is that, do we have a norm yet? We don't have a norm yet?
The problem is, is that all the cities are dealing with this, this week. Um, pretty much this same week. Every city is doing this. Um, I think West Jordan's is tomorrow night. Um, Taylorsville, like I mentioned in the staff report, asked for a copy of our subdivision ordinance because they are also drafting this. Um, it is not, they, they are, we are all scrambling to get this done. Uh, I would, I would say we are not scrambling. We have had this pretty close to drafted for a couple, for a couple of months. It just needed some cleanup. And then we decided to, um, actually, like I mentioned in the staff report, remove the design criteria to another time because that was starting to take too much time. So.
Can I read my legal search? Do it. Legal term may is an expression of possibility, a permissive choice to act or not. And ordinarily implies some degree of discretion.
What happens when you add not to after may?
Well, I think, I think the bigger question is, 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 does, does nine B, is, does nine B, is, does nine B, is, is, is nine B correlating to ten or does it just correlate to the scenario envisioned in nine? Um, and I think that, that's, that's the big, that's, that's the, that's the.
That's what I would assume. I mean, typically when you read code, so A, so in, in my opinion, and, and, and correct me if I'm wrong, uh, Mr. Richardson, I'll start calling you.
Esquire, please.
Yeah, Esquire. Yeah, esquire, counsel, is that A and B of 9 are to 9, not to 10.
Right.
But to 9.
And I think that the point, yes, the point of it is, is that if, if a city chooses to do a concurrent processing of the preliminary and final, basically what they're saying is, what they're, what they're basically saying is, i- if you go, if you, if you, once you get to, if you're gonna combine the preliminary and the final, you can't make that, you can't make people go through a multi-step process that's very, that's very confusing. If they, if they hit the, if they hit the target, you're gonna approve it. Which I, which I, I think is great. I mean, our, 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 our state needs more housing stock. I, I think it's great. You know, sitting here listening to this, I mean, Zach and Susan and Mustafa, I'm sorry. You're got, you're, this, this, this legislation is gonna make your job harder.
Which will probably all change too.
It'll probably all change come January.
Yeah, so, and I trust, and I pers, I trust you guys that, I trust you implicitly and completely. But I do, I also, I listened to Ned and I, I listened to Marin. I've, I've heard Marin several times and I wanna, I wanna give her credit here. You know, talk to these developers and say, you know, this, and, 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 and when there's, when there's a dispute between the, between the residents and the developer and say, you know, they're gonna come back. We're gonna come back and, and we've seen the developers move, if that makes sense. And, and it's, it's given the residents, I think, a better result. And I, I mean, I would be supportive of, 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 you know, of, of a, of a motion that's similar to what we've been talking about, if anyone wants to make it.
So just a couple of things I'll just add, just include it in here. So to help Lisa feel a, a little bit better, here's a version of Lehigh's application. So here's what we've got, application submittal procedures. So it, it's each, there are application requirements. So they have to initial each item. This, I'm pretty much taking this and just slapping Murray's logo on it, just so you know. And so format and general items, you have this many. Yeah, it's going to be a lot of items. So other required documents, required notes, buffering, sensitive lands, irrigation ditches, drainage, water sewer. If you guys want to look through this a little bit more in depth, do you want me to slow down so you can read through it?
I don't think that's what we're talking about.
I know, that's not, but I'm trying to, I'm trying to do multiple things. I'm trying to alleviate Lisa's concerns with the application.
I think Lisa's concerns, I'm not gonna speak for Lisa, but I think hers concerns were similar to mine. Not that this application isn't complete.
Right.
You know, everything is checked off.
Yep.
It's just we're handing off the ability for someone in the city.
Yep.
Which maybe Zach, maybe somebody else, maybe a department. But because it's not outlined exactly who can do that, you know, I could be the department head and go, you know what, I hate these, all these requirements. I'm just gonna take them out, slap our logo on that and then send it out, right?
I get that, for sure. But I just wanted to show you what it will eventually look like. So now, so this is just from the League of Cities and Towns. This was drafted by their attorneys. Here's your review and update your process. Here's what they say here.
The final plat not be reviewed by council.
It's more of a subset of the planning commission. What does that mean?
And I think some of the wording right there maybe encapsulate some of our discomfort in that you are becoming the administrative land use authority in the final review.
So what I think it does is that it removes the land use authority approval from, from your purview.
Well. It says you become the land use authority.
No, it, it says the municipality, which is not staff. Right, but I mean, again.
Staff, if you have staff.
Well, it really is.
Could manage to be the administrative land use authority to take the process of final subdivision, review the recording process.
But it's not an issue of, they're only gonna approve it if it meets, if it, if it meets the ordinances. And we're only gonna approve it if it meets the ordinances too.
Correct.
We all have, we all have to follow the same law.
Yeah.
That's, that's the state law.
Yep.
No, I think that there's, I mean, there, there's, there are probably, I mean, there are some cities where maybe the planning commissions have forgotten that a little bit. And there's, there's some cities that have some reputations. But I think that, I think that for, for me, it's more of a, an issue of process and, and, and wanting the, the citizens to. I, I think somebody talked about, you know, people feeling like, people, people feeling like things are done in the dark, if that makes sense. And wanting it to, wanting them to, wanting them to have that transparency. And Mike, I didn't mean to cut you off, I'm sorry.
No, 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 you're good. Let's see.
So Zach, just for my own understanding, if someone made a motion to approve it, the red line copy as written, without adding in the planning commission changes to the section 180? We would vote on it? And we would vote no if you wanted those changes? Is that?
You could, you could vote no that you don't want.
Voting no doesn't mean you want the changes. Voting no means you don't want it as written.
Right. Yeah, means you don't want it as currently written.
And then we could vote again after that. Okay, well, let's, let's take a, let's take a, let's, let's, let's throw a balloon up here, okay?
There you go.
I'm gonna make a motion that the planning commission forward, can you take me to the?
Oh, I guess, yeah, sorry, I'm going through. Doing a hundred things at once.
You're good. I, I know, I appreciate it. I'm gonna, I'm gonna make a, make a motion that, that the planning commission forward a recommendation of approval to the city council for the proposed amendments to title 16 subdivision ordinances as, as written in the staff report with the change of in, in section 16.12.80, the, the, the part, the, the, the section that has been changed to staff be changed back to, to commission. And in 16.12.100, the same, the same, the same change we made, that staff changed to commission. We'll see if anyone else likes that idea. Okay, we have a motion from Commissioner Lowry. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, we have a second from Commissioner Hacker. Let's do vote.
Commissioner Lowry?
Yes.
Commissioner Hacker?
Yes.
Commissioner Nay?
I'm, I'm willing to support changes without a wholesale review based on the recommendations. I think we're taking bad language from the state and potentially make it worse with unintended consequences, so no.
Commissioner Patterson?
I'm sorry, can I?
Commissioner Nay, can we repeat that, please?
You're in a motion.
Yeah, you're in a motion. We can't, I'm sorry. Commissioner Patterson?
Yay. Yes.
Okay, Commissioner Henry?
No.
Commissioner Malkovich?
I'm vote yes. I don't know what the legal ramifications are if we change so that we're out of compliance with the state, but there we go.
And Chair Pearson?
Yes.
Okay, so it's five yes and two no. So we will forward that on. Hey, not my thing.
I, I will, I will just say it's based on the, my, the reading of that, of the, of the ordinance. So I do think that it is, oh, it is ambiguous.
Okay.
So city council could vote on it as written though, not take our recommendation.
We will take your recommendation and base it, and then they will have both recommendation.
I'd like to have here Mr. Nay's thought process though because it's ambiguous to me as well. And because it's ambiguous, I don't think you could win an argument in either direction. It's ambiguous, but what do you think, Mr. Nay? You think that it's clear and therefore what we've done is out of compliance?
Yeah.
I, I think that, I think that it's unclear. I think the state language is, is poorly written. I, I, I see both sides of the argument. And I see that as one of the things that they will remedy in their next round of cleanup. But, you know, we're, we're making changes to the red line copy without really having a chance to find tooth coma and see how all of the different sections reference each other. That, that worries me because we may be taking bad sausage and making it worse, so.
Man, why don't you say that before I made the motion?
I, I said it. I, I'm not saying I'm right, I'm not saying I'm wrong, I'm just saying.
On the proposed amendment before we voted, I think we should have had some discussion in there.
It's a good point.
I appreciate it. You blame me because I was all on me.
Should have asked for a point of order.
Hey, I, I. Let's just be very clear, my wife reminds me all the time that I'm wrong. Let's just leave it at that.
A question, given the way we have proposed that, looking at section 160440, to make it consistent, do you need to remove the, the strikeout on final?
Once we make the motion and it's been approved and it's done, so we, we don't have any ability to go back and do anything else other than what we've done unfortunately.
Circle it.
So.
But the good thing is, what we did was forward a recommendation and the staff now did this upon them to go.
Bring up my point of order now.
Yes.
We did not correctly handle the, that amendment. We should have had some discussion on the amendment and possibility for amendments to the amendment.
I, 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 I agree. I don't disagree, but unfortunately because of the way.
Oh, we could make another one.
No, it's done.
Once it's.
Well, it was.
You cannot, once it's approved, you cannot.
I don't disagree. I don't.
Did not follow.
Okay, um, is there anything else in this meeting, Zach?
Nope. We're. The next meeting, so the December 21st meeting is canceled, so January 4th is the next one. It's Travis's last meeting. We are going to have, if you are willing and want to, have a little goodbye dinner.
A tequila party?
Yes. So, so if you would like to come a little earlier, like 5:30, what, what do you all think of that? And we'll have a little dinner, like we've kind of done traditionally when someone's completed all three terms, nine years, et cetera. Are you all okay with that?
You can, just not about stuff at the meeting.
Is that a, okay?
Yeah, sounds great.
Please invite your family.
My wife has not come to a single meeting in nine years and my children have refused to come to a single. Even when they had to attend public meetings for her school.
Free meal? Okay, well, we'll plan on that if you would kind of just mark it 5:30.
I'll bring my dog.
Awesome. Okay, unless there's anything else, then. Motion to adjourn.
I'm adjourned.
Time.
Adjourn at 8:35, 8:36. Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor? Were adjourned?
Awesome.
I heard everybody.